Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, and we will begin with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Corbin, Fritsch, and Scootley. Commissioner Moore is joining us on Zoom, and Commissioner Alves is absent. With six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
Good evening. My name is Frank Corbin, and I'd like to call to order the August 13th meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'll entertain a motion from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda as presented.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bob and Lori. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Waiting for Roger and Jason.
Aye.
Okay. And I'll just note for the record that Jason is now present.
He's now present, and he also checked for a yes. Okay, all right, motion passes unanimously.
Yes, I'm here, aye.
All right, thank you, Jason. You know, I like verbal. Get down there and talk. All right. So prior to tonight, also, the Planning Commission received meeting notes from the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections for those meeting notes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes as presented.
I'd make the motion and I'd say, uh, thanks, Megan. I really appreciate the way Megan captures the moment without sometimes the nuances, you know, the negative nuances or something. She really does a great job. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scootley and Bob. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 I abstain, I was absent.
Okay.
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Okay, Jason? All right, a green check. All right, and I also vote aye with, so you got, we got one abstention. All right, motion passes, thank you. All right, next item is public comment. Megan, has anybody signed up for public comment?
There's no one in the room signed up for public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to provide a comment? Please unmute now. Okay, I see none.
Okay, no public comment. All right, tonight's agenda item is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. The purpose of a work session is for the staff to present information about the topic to the Planning Commission and for the Planning Commission to ask questions. No public comments on the proposal will be taken during the workshop. Mindy?
Thank you, Mindy Brooks, me Development Director. So tonight, we are going to talk surprisingly about periodic update. Again, I know it's shocking. But tonight, we're going to talk about population allocation reconciliation that we need to do. You guys received the materials for this a couple of weeks back, and everything was posted online for the public to review. Okay, next slide. It's been a minute since we've talked about population allocation, so I'm going to give you a few reminders so you remember where you were, because it's been over a year now since we've got into this. We will then talk about the land capacity analysis, which you did just review a number of land capacity analysis things. We'll get into the request from Chehalis. But one thing I want to be really clear is that this request is only for Chehalis. We are not changing allocations related to anybody else. This is specific to Chehalis only. So we're not opening up the whole thing, because a lot of work was done leading up to that whole, you know, all the population allocations. There was all the planned growth committee meetings and your guys' workshops, so we're just entertaining Chehalis's request. Next slide. Okay, so these are the steps to getting to population allocation. We are required, the county, to allocate population based on the Office of Financial Management's 20-year forecast. It's a range, it's a high, medium, low range, and we need to stay in that range. It's a bit of a process to get outside of that range, so we stay within it. The way that we did this over a year ago was the county did a simple trend analysis to start with, right? We just took the city's population growth over the past 20 years, did a trend analysis out, and told the cities, that was within OFM's range, just to do basic trend analysis. And we told the cities, you guys can use what we've produced, or you can come up with your own methodology, give us that methodology and propose your own population. All the cities except for Morton decided to do their own methodology. Morton used our trend, our basic trend analysis when they did the work. Remember that when we say the cities, we actually mean the cities plus their UGA. I'm going to say that a lot, but it's city limits plus UGA in our, in our county, so it's not just the city. So then what happens is those methodologies came in, and we took those to the Planned Growth Committee, and the Planned Growth Committee weighed those over a course of meetings and refined those, and then they made a recommendation formal, they voted formal to give a recommendation to you guys. You guys held multiple workshops. I went back, I think you did three or four, and then had a hearing, public hearing, and then you recommended to Board of County Commissioners. They had a workshop and a public hearing to approve. So that was the process that we went through. Remember that this process right here repeats every five years. So every five years, we get new OFM, and then we do this all over again. So 2027, we'll do it again, and that's how we course correct. Okay, next slide. So again, we provided this information in the materials, but I'll just go through it. So during spring 2023, City of Chehalis, they, the staff themselves, provided the methodology for the 20-year population allocation, and they did their, their own work based on the capacity that they felt was within the city limits and the UGA. So they came back to us looking at their city limits and UGA back in, in 2023, and they said, we have more than enough land to accommodate 23,000 people in, in 20 years. The county raised a lot of concerns. You guys heard all those concerns, right? Probably the biggest one was, can you really serve that many people? A lot of concerns. But the city stood by their analysis and said, this is what we want, and so that is what we took forward. Next slide. So these are the allocations that were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, including that 23,000. Again, they were very adamant that this would work for them, and this is what they wanted. It's a more than doubling of population. That's a lot. It's a lot. Next slide. So I want to talk about how this population allocation is used, because that explains how we got to now, right? So if we don't do that, we have to do that, because then the cities and the county we allocate to ourselves too. You have to plan for that growth. You have to demonstrate that you can accommodate that growth. That's what the Growth Management Act says that we have to do. Accommodate means there's enough, it has to be enough land in the city limits and UGA, and it has to be zoned appropriately, so you can apply, you can provide the housing and the jobs for that population over the next 20 years. The tool that everyone uses, the standard tool to determine if you can accommodate population growth is a land capacity analysis. It's a formal analysis, it's very well-known, everybody does it the same way. And it evaluates current city, current city limits, UGA, the existing zoning before anybody makes changes, vacant land, and it tells you how many more homes and jobs you can accommodate in there. And if there isn't enough land zoned appropriately, then the jurisdiction needs to change their zoning, or they need to ask us to expand the UGA, or some combination of those, because you are required, everyone is required to demonstrate you can accommodate the growth. Next slide. So for Chehalis, they, like all of us, hired a consultant to do their periodic update, right? We all need a lot of help. And the consultant does the land capacity analysis, right? So their consultant did their land capacity analysis. They determined that the existing city limits and, and UGA for Chehalis can only accommodate 13,599 people, not 23,000, which is what we sort of assumed, but it was confirmed by that land capacity analysis. We, Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners, we only agreed to the 23,000 because Chehalis was adamant that they could accommodate that and they could serve it. It was very predicated on that. So this analysis showed that that was not true. So in order to accommodate, what that means is Chehalis would have to really increase density inside their UGA and city limits, and probably also need to look at a big UGA expansion to get to 23,000. And both of those are going to require an environmental impact statement and a transportation analysis. There's just no way around that. County and the city does not have money, resources, time to do either of those. So again, the assumption proved to be untrue, right? The assumption, yeah, we can accommodate it, proved to be not true. So, next slide, Chehalis has formally asked, this is their formal request, that we change the 2045 population allocation to them to 20 or to 13,500 residents.
On that last one, that slide, excuse me for interrupting.
No, that's okay.
This accommodation, because we kept asking, do you like those numbers, blah, 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 blah? What decisions did we make? Because I know, and we approved some UGA expansions. Did we approve them because?
No, those were, no.
Speak to that.
Yeah, so we approved UGA expansions in 2022, prior to this. We approved some UGA expansions. Those were property owner requests. I, that has been our past practice. I have urged everyone strongly to not do that. I don't think it's appropriate to do UGA expansions based on property owners, because it, it is not in line with the letter of the law. The letter of the law is, can you accommodate growth, and if you can't, then you may look at UGA expansion. It is not based on who wants in the UGA. But we did do that in 2022. 2023, we started this whole analysis. Yep. Yes.
I noticed, deep in the reading here, that they have 2.5 people per dwelling unit. So, you know, that gives us 8,000 units. Does that sound right to you?
Of total housing? Yeah, so we will, we will rerun the housing needs analysis based on the allocation, and I'll be able to give you the exact number.
Do, do you still use 2.5 per unit? Because that assumes a three-bedroom unit. You know, I, I personally have done thousands of units that are one-bedroom or.
Absolutely. So the housing, the next step after the population is to rerun the housing analysis. We, we are not given that choice. We use the state's housing analysis, their HAP, which we used last time, you guys all saw that. What we are allowed to do is mess with the numbers in terms of, we, you guys all decided to put more of the lower-income side into Centralia Chehalis and the I-5 corridor and move it away from Mossy Rock. But the, the, when we get to the actual housing analysis, it is the state's, and I can't remember, I'll have to go back and look at their methodology, because they base it on census for our, for our county. So I'll have to go back and look and see what our average is for our county. So that's what the state's HAP model does. So the, any numbers that the, that the cities were using outside of the HAP were, are an estimate.
How many units is this proposal for?
This isn't a proposal for units. That will come next.
I, I said that wrong, but I don't read any summary of how many units.
It's not in here. That will come next.
But you do have the population, the people per unit.
Yeah, housing allocation is the, the next one.
Housing, are you asking for land capacity analysis, how they determine how many people they can accommodate based on their current zoning?
I'm just trying to make some sense out of the numbers here. In one place, you list one number, and you know, the 23,000, they say it's 2.5. So obviously, that's 8,000 units, but I don't see a summary of that. That, that's fine. I'm just trying to follow.
No, that's, no, that's absolutely fine. I just want to make sure I, because I thought we were going into the next step, which is housing allocation. So.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt, because I think that what, what maybe happened, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we expanded the UGA, and then when Chehalis did the analysis, they went to those, those, those developments that they knew would be coming online, and they're, they're, they aren't going to be one-bedroom. They're going to be, you know, more likely, they're going to be, you know. So I think the city just said, well, this is what's probably going to go in there times this many people.
Yeah, if we're looking, yeah, if we're looking backwards as to what they did at, when they did their analysis for the 23,000, when they said that they could accommodate that, they made a number of errors. Error number one, they did not subtract critical areas out of the calculation. Number two, they applied a straight across-the-board number, which is not how we actually do it, right? It's not that simple. I wish it were that simple. It's not that simple. And they did not subtract out the area that will go to roads, utilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they, it was just a basic, this is all of our land, and we're going to apply a, a number across all of it. We can accommodate this many people. When you do a land capacity analysis, you still have to make an assumption. Your assumption tends to be based, however, on past trends of the size of housing units that are going into an area. So you, you look at what you've been permitting, and you say, okay, well, if that keeps going forward, my vacant land will develop out in such and such a way. So land capacity gets a lot more nuanced to help you understand what your capacity is in your current situation. And then, but then from there, we go into an actual housing needs assessment. We go into that HAP model, and that gets, that really gets into the nuance of what kind of housing you really need to accommodate your population. So it just kind of, every step just gets more nuanced going forward.
Do they ever have taken into consideration the sales that are happening, or in our case, not happening?
It's, it's not really the sales as much as the permitting that we're looking at, because we're looking at how many new units are going in. Is really what we largely are looking at, because we're looking at a land capacity, you're looking at, you're just going to assume what has a house in it, people will continue to live in it. Might be a different person, but they'll keep living in it. Somebody will be living in it, but then we look at the vacant and the underutilized to determine how many more housing units we think will go in, and of what kind, right? So at each step, it gets slightly more nuanced to look at, well, is it multifamily, is it single, et cetera, et cetera, to figure out how many more people we can accommodate. If we just assume every single housing structure that has people in it, we'll just continue to have houses, have people in it. May switch which people, but they will keep having people in them. So yeah, it does get super nuanced as you move forward. I'm sorry, I was confused. You were looking back, and I was onto the next step already of like, no, 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 we're going to get really into housing too. Yay. Okay, let's skip to the next one. So the ask is for us to take their number down to 13,500 residents, which is right at what their land capacity showed that they can accommodate. So next slide. So it's the only number will change. So this is that same table. It's the only number I've adjusted there. Except for I didn't re-add that, you can't even see it, so it's fine. I didn't re-add the total, so they're wrong. So I'm really glad that you can't see them, because I didn't re-add the bottom line. I totally forgot to do that today, but I will. So that's the only requested change. Next slide.
Mindy, did you just say that some of that data is wrong, or can I look at that? Is that right? What did you just say about?
The very bottom line, total Lewis County, I didn't resum.
Oh.
So those are wrong. It's like, you know, subtract 10,000 out of, so it's like, what, 94 something or other? And that one's like, you know, 11,000 something or other. Yep, I just, I forgot to sum the, resum the bottom numbers. Oh, so again, just a reminder, five years from now, we'll redo that. So as I mentioned before, this stuff all has to go to the Planned Growth Committee, so it's going to go to the Planned Growth Committee next week. The reason why I brought it to you guys first is we need to do this fast. So what I would like to do is, I anticipate the Planned Growth Committee will vote to approve this to go to you guys. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and plan on having the hearing for this, the second, or the first, no, the second September hearing here, and do that as a public hearing. You can vote yea or nay. I'm not saying that you have to vote yes, but go ahead and have the hearing and have your guys' decision and move it to the Board of County Commissioners in November, so we can try and get this through, so that Chehalis will have adopted numbers that they can continue to work with through periodic update. So that's our hope, and why I brought it to you guys before Planned Growth Committee. Any questions, any other questions about it? I know, it's been a long time since we've talked about population stuff, so.
No, I was, Mindy, or Director, would you put the slide back up, the next one before this? You know, a couple of things I wrote here. I wanted to thank the City of Chehalis and the new city manager, and I wanted to thank our staff for fixing this. I'm sure that there have been conversations behind the scenes. What I remember is the, over the last 20 years, Chehalis had grown 14%. And so this makes sense. So when people are presented historical data, you know, you get trends. So I guess the takeaway from here is when three or four people tell you, hey, you might be wrong, you might be wrong, you might be wrong, you need to listen, and I really appreciate the city bringing this back. I'm ready to move this forward as soon as you want to move it forward.
Yeah, the city's been lovely to work with on this. That when they got the land capacity analysis back, they initiated conversations right away. They've been really nice to, to work with on this.
I'm, I'm going to go with my segue here. Now that we've gotten this, I mean, we've learned a little bit. The UGAs that we approved beforehand, I don't know whether I would approve those now. All valid, but I might be more resistant. I would ask the city now, as they're resetting and re-engaging and talking to people, is listen to some good ideas, because there's probably a number of people who've got ideas of where we should go, which direction we should go in this area to get out of critical areas, stay out of floodplains. And to do that's going to require a little bit of vision. I mean, as you've told me before, that in small towns, people ask to be, which way they want the UGA to go. Well, maybe we, this is a good time to grow up and say, okay, which way do we want to go? Let's pull the levees, let's ask for the money, let's put in a big road somewhere, and let's, you know, think about the next 40 to 50 years. So this gives me hope. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Jason or Roger?
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Roger. Jason?
I don't have anything. I would kind of second Bob's take. It's, it's cool to watch everybody work on this and, and you know, people not, not being worried about being right, but getting it right. And so, yeah, it's, it's cool to watch this process play out. I'm, I'm really encouraged with where Chehalis is heading as well, and the current leadership and all that stuff. So, yeah, just, it's, it's been cool to kind of see this process play out this way. So, yeah, it was, good job to everybody who, who was involved.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else on the Planning Commission? Okay. No further questions, your honor.
Yeah, so we will bring this back to you guys. Next month is a hearing to ask for a vote to move it forward to Board of County Commissioners, which we'll do. When I bring it back to you, I will have the housing allocations included in it. As you guys remember, the housing allocations is more of something that just gets spit out of a model. We can do a little bit of tweaking in there, which we did last time. We'll probably do a teeny bit too this time, but it is largely, here's your housing information. But we will have that as well, because we'll need to update both for Chehalis, so that their numbers are correct across the board.
We do really appreciate all the hard work you do for us, so thank you. Okay, anything else, Mindy, for, for any other topic?
Not tonight, I've got stuff under good of the order.
Okay, all right, let's go to good of the order then. Mindy, good of the order?
Yes, I'm good of the order. We're going to have a couple code amendments that are going to come to you this fall, and they're probably going to move pretty quickly. One of them is related to Senate Bill 5290, which is the permitting schedule. So that was 2022. 2022 was when the state passed it, and we need to implement by January 1st. So we'll have some code amendments that are coming forward to you related to those changes, and that's around the timelines for permitting. And then we are looking at making some other code changes around definitions this year as well, to shore up some loopholes, if you will. So those will be coming forward too. So I just want to give you a heads up. We've been spending a lot of time on comp plan, which we have to, and that's not going to stop, but we are going to switch hats back into what you guys usually do a lot of, which is code amendment. So I'll have a couple of those this fall for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any good of the order for the Planning Commissioners? Roger? I mean, Jeff, sorry. Looking right at you, calling you the wrong name, sorry.
I'm not paying attention. As you're probably aware, there was a fire out in Winlock just a couple of days ago now. Brought in the helicopters and fire response from all over, very, very good fire response. I mean, it, it was about a two-acre fire, and, and they put that sucker out. I mean, they stomped it and dragged it, and it was, it was out. Not too far from Kathy's place, by the way, just across the road and down a little bit. So the, the sad part is, it, it was out in the UGA, and it was, it's all vacant land, absentee landowners, brush and tall weeds. And I, I just want to encourage everybody to use a little bit of wisdom when we, when we go in this direction, because the unintended consequences are, are tough and they're expensive. You know, this was a, this was a druggie camping in a shed or in the house. He burned the house down, burned the shed down, burned, you know, a couple of acres, and caused a whole bunch of trouble. So it just, when we do this stuff, just keep in mind that there really are other consequences that, other than the modeling, and this could be, and so. Everything ended well this time. Thank you.
Any other Planning Commissioners for good of the order? Okay, seeing none. The next Planning Commission meeting will be August 27th, and the agenda items will be a joint workshop with the Board of County Commissioners on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Please make every effort to be at that meeting in person. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting that you need to let us know about?
No, just if you would like to come a half an hour early, we will provide tacos like we did last time. So if you guys want to come in and socialize with the, with yourselves, with each other, and with the county commissioners, please feel free to come early. I am dearly hoping that our tech will be ready for the new building, and we can be over there, but I need an update on that, the 27th. Yeah.
Yeah, one last item. I'd really like to thank Megan, because she prints out just a packet for me every time. And it's so much easier to read through this, make notes, and have some coherency. Thanks, Megan.
Okay, so will there be any of the Planning Commissioners absent from that meeting? Okay, so we're expecting a full house. Okay, Bob, did you have something? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd make that motion.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thirty minutes, man, thirty-two. That's a record.